Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Will you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? All right, like to welcome everyone to our council meeting tonight. And again, I want to thank the Charter Review Commission for the work that they did. Really some good recommendations. Will you call the roll, please?
Bachman?
Here.
Henning? Gorman?
Here.
Merkel?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
Lieberman?
Here.
And Stevens?
Here.
They already did, you already did.
And we've already excused Mr. Henning. He had a medical issue tonight. And he, hopefully, he's better, but I'm sure he will be. Okay, so we are gonna have the clerk's report. Will you please read the council from the work session?
You have the work session minutes of October 19th, 2023.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve as written by Mr. Gorman, second by Ms. Kelly, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, and let the, oh, yes, that's right. Roll call, please.
Bachman?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Merkel?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Lieberman?
Yes.
And Stevens?
Yes. Let the record show that that's, oh, yeah. I abstain. I forgot I wasn't here. Right. So let the record show that it was unanimous with one absence and one abstention, so. Okay, will you read the next meeting, the meeting minutes, please?
You also have the council meeting minutes of October 19th, 2023.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve as written by Ms. Gorman, second by Mr. Merkel. And we need a roll call here also.
Bachman?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Merkel?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Lieberman?
Yes.
And Stevens?
Abstain and let the record show it's unanimous with one absence and one abstention. And I need a motion to, we're gonna amend our agenda. We have two items that we want to add tonight. One ordinance and also one resolution. So is there a motion to amend the agenda?
Oh, moved.
Second.
Motion to amend the agenda by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Merkel, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, thank you. Under new business, we have two ordinances. Will you read the first ordinance, please?
Ordinance O-112324, an ordinance approving amendment of Clayton codified ordinances in order to add a new chapter, 185, entitled Hotel Lodging Excise Tax.
Evening.
Mr. Schweitzer?
We talked about this, I forget, a couple of meetings ago, about we instituting a lodging tax. I know we have no hotel or motels in the city, but we'll get it on our books if they ever do come in. We have it in place and we can collect tax revenues from those transient people and utilize it for funding parks or whatever we want to do.
You don't believe this acts as a deterrent?
No. No, because it's passing on to the, to the people stay there and they pay the tax. It doesn't deter me when I go stay at a hotel what taxes getting thrown on, so.
I'll move for approval.
Motion to approve the ordinance as written by Mr. Gorman, second by Ms. Kelly, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record show that that ordinance passed unanimously. Will you read the second ordinance, please?
Ordinance O-112325, an ordinance amending the City Income Tax Code at Chapter 183 of the Clayton codified ordinances to adopt revisions mandated by Ohio House Bill 33.
It's a little early for Christmas, but the state's changing the tax code again for us. I know you all received copies of it. We were going back and forth with our representatives from the Central Collection Agency trying to make sure we had our wording and everything correct. I can go through the changes that they're making. One is exempting income for those under 18. We already do that, so we didn't have to make a change. Net profit filing extension, they're moving that one more month instead of the 10th month, it moves it to the 11th month for them to file. Taxpayer correspondence when potentially under extension. Basically, if somebody gets an extension, the tax administrator cannot reach out to them and talk about their return that has not been filed yet because they have an extension. If they do, they could be, help, they could be fined or helped pay for cost up to $150 for violating that, that part of the law. They put a lower cap on late filing penalty. It can maybe $25 now. I know currently ours is at 150, so that will be a decrease. State of Ohio Business Filing Elections, we already allow that with through the Ohio Business Gateway and the state doing that, so there's no amendment necessary on that. And then the final one was for net profit apportionment. This is dealing with remote workers as far as defining what a qualifying remote worker or employee is, as well as what a qualifying remote work location is. So we had to have a reading tonight, next meeting, and then 30 days it'll go into effect, so it's, it's ready to go. Most of these are for years ending on or after 12/31/23, so.
I just have two, two comments, actually. The first is, I'm gonna make sure I'm reading this and heard you write, this is something that's mandated by the House?
Yes.
And also, so the new language, that'll be, that'll be written by you, Martina?
Yeah, so as Kevin said, we were in touch with CCA and Michelle Jordan and their legal counsel. I drafted up the revised language, they reviewed it, we all are in agreement, this is what we need to do. Obviously, since the General Assembly of Ohio has mandated we make these changes, much like they mandated in 2015, that we mandate changes for 2016. So basically, we have no say as to whether or not we can adopt these or not. The state of Ohio is saying you have to adopt it, and they're not huge revisions as Kevin went through them.
They actually seem, see, some of it seems a little bit petty to me, extending 30 days and...
Yeah.
Okay.
It's not affecting the amount of tax or anything like that. It's basically, as Kevin went over, procedural matters.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Schweitzer on this? Is there a motion?
It's moved.
Second.
Motion to accept the ordinance, adopt the ordinance as written by Mr. Merkel, second by Mr. Bachman, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record show that that's unanimous. And we have one bit of old business here.
Mayor, since this was tabled at the last meeting, if you want to go ahead and move forward with this resolution at this meeting and appoint somebody, then what we'll need is a motion and a vote to untable this resolution.
I think the reason we tabled it last meeting is because everyone wasn't here, and that's the same case tonight. So I move that we leave it on the table until next meeting.
That's fine, then there's a motion to leave it on the table. If we could have a motion or vote on that, then we're good.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Motion to leave this order or resolution R-102360 on the table until next meeting by Mr. Gorman, second by Ms. Kelly, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. So I would like to try to get this filled next meeting, if we can. So, all right, thank you. Let's see, the next item is new business, and we have two resolutions. Will you read the first resolution, please?
Resolution R-112361, a resolution to authorize and approve the five-year capital improvement budget.
Evening again. This is a requirement from the charter. Maybe we should change this, I don't have to do it every five years, but I know you all received a digital copy. This is actually a copy of the five-year CIP plan. It is just kind of trying to lay out what we were planning and putting together, you know, kind of a long-range plan. Each year, it will be adjusted based to priorities or funding that we have. And like I said, when we come for the yearly budgets, you'll be approving those items in our yearly budget, as well as just what's in there now. So it gives you kind of idea what we're looking at as far as replacing equipment or projects we want to do.
Well, I was told it was a 400-page document, that's why we didn't get hard copies of it.
357.
How much?
357.
Oh, yeah, we're exaggerating a little bit, Barbara, but that's close enough. I'll move for approval, because I don't want to read it.
It's got pictures.
It does have pictures. So this was created with the new software that we bought last year to help Kevin pull this together. And if you, I'm, I'm sure you've all taken a look at it, but when you look at it, you know, it breaks it down nicely, it shows you the revenues, the expenditures, and it breaks it down by year.
Yeah.
It's pretty illustrative. And I think Chief Garver wanted, before we, before council makes a vote, wanted to get up and talk about what's in the fire section.
Yeah, one of the questions we get every year, you know, how's the collaborator saving this money? And I keep kicking that can down the road. This is the year that this kicks in. So we should be purchasing a medic in this, in next year. That is not the case. So that is a $350,000 savings. And we are due to buy an engine next year if we were not part of collaborative, which is now a million dollars in savings. So just between next year and the two things that we should be buying, you're almost at $1.4 million in savings in your capital side. So you will see a medic in next year's proposed budget, but that is not because we need it in '24, is because it's a three-year time span now to even get a medic when you order it. So, you know, we need it for '26, that's when we're due to replace it. But usually, we order it in '26, we get it by the end of '26, that's no longer the case with everything. So we don't have to worry about fire apparatus, but fire apparatus is four years out. If you order today, you will not take delivery for four years, so.
Is that $1,300,000 gonna pay for the new firehouse, Kevin? Or, I mean, excuse me?
I wish. So, and that's one of the other things, I mean, you're not gonna see the firehouse in this five-year capital improvement. We will bring that to council when we get all the, all the information on that and get with funding. And when we get to all of that point, we'll get to that. It's not, so don't be surprised if you're not gonna see that in a five-year. We know it's in there, as far as, we know it's on our radar. When we do that is just depending on funding and the process, so. But we did kick that off today with a, all-day meeting for the firehouse, so. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Chief or for Kevin?
Yeah, before we go to vote, the current obligations that fall under the capital budget, there's $8 million total showing there, and this is on page four.
Yeah, the bonds and...
Correct.
Yeah.
The general obligations?
Mm-hmm.
How, how long until we can eliminate that $8 million?
Somehow, it seems like everything matures in 2030. When I looked at all the bonds, it's 2029, 2030, 2031, so it's right around there when the Main Street improvements, the Commerce Park, Hoak Kimmel Road bonds we issued and then the, some of the road bonds.
Wasn't it because we went back and reissued bonds?
It still kept the same term when we refunded the one, one issue, but everything was, most of them were 30-year bonds that were reissued. So like I said, when I look back and looked at the maturity of them, they're all around that 2030, so. Kind of a huge windfall then, so.
But I mean, from the, the impact that, you know, the pain on these general obligations has on the capital budget, on the capital budget as well as...
They're included in there, yeah. The bond payments are included in this five-year CIP.
It's like, how much? And I was, you know, I wasn't trying to find everything, because it's like small print.
Top of my head, I think it's probably around $350,000, $400,000. Some of the loans that we have too is some for the sewer and water. We do pay some of that out of some of the TIFs where the lines were affected at, so we, we try to pull from various funds just besides the debt service or CIP.
But the lines, like along Crestway, they were put in?
Yeah, the ones go through North Clayton and, yeah, up in the Improvement District One.
So if there's, if there are more people connecting to those lines, that could potentially be paid off sooner, potentially?
No, we don't, we don't have those lines anymore, we're stuck with paying for it, but yeah.
Well, I'm saying, but the funds for paying for it would be more readily available?
No, there's, it's, we don't get anything when they, we could use some impact fees if they tap into it for impact fees, but...
Tap-in fees and that sort of thing?
That goes to, that would go to county.
We see no, no benefit from any of that?
No, just putting it in place to have further development.
I just said, you know, from the standpoint that we're looking at, you know, the potential vote for income tax issue coming up this month, and what, you know, if and or buts, things don't turn out the way we'd like them to, what that impact would be potentially on the capital budget as far as making some of these recommendations to move forward? Could we be doing this? Are we kind of putting the cart before the horse, so to speak?
Like, it's, I mean, if you want to get down to it, it's a wish list. I mean, especially for Randy with his, all his equipment, so. But, you know, if we, if the levy doesn't pass, I mean, that's why I said, the funding, we look at, how much funding do we have? What are we gonna do? We have to prioritize. So that's, it's...
I'm saying, so if we vote on this and things don't turn out the way we prefer?
Yeah, this is not really set in stone, it's just, it's required by charter, it's a, just a five-year...
It's a framework, yeah.
Yeah.
It's a plan.
Yeah, it's not approving the purchases of them. That would be done each year when we do the, the individual budgets.
No, I'm just saying that if, then we, like you're saying, we have to, we'd have to seriously look at this...
Yes.
Five-year plan and essentially say what, what becomes a priority item that we need to focus on.
Yeah, we start keeping equipment longer instead of trying to...
Push everything else back.
Yeah, right, instead of, you know, rotating them out, so.
Anything else?
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve the plan as written by Mr. Gorman, second by Ms. Kelly, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record show that's unanimous. And our next resolution?
Resolution R-112362, a resolution of encouragement for Officer Cody Cecil and in support of the Clayton Police Department.
I'll move for approval.
Hold on a second. You want to say anything, Amanda or Chief?
Chief would like to say anything to council. I mean, I know that the police department is very appreciative of the support that council has shown, and I know that Cody is as well. I don't know if there's anything else you'd like to add? Okay.
Well, I'd just like to add something. I'm very proud of the way not only Cody, but all of our officers responded and all of the other officers. There was a lot of people down there that day. I mean, I'm really sad and really sorry that it happened the way it did. I, I think everyone is. But I couldn't be more proud of him. He, he did a, he just did a fantastic job. He did exactly what he was trained to do. And I think that's a good reflection on, on our city, on you, Chief, personally, and of course, on the rest of our department and on Cody. So I'm, I'm, I'm just so proud of him, I can't say anymore. I think he did exactly what is expected of him and, and what he, what he was trained to do, so.
Is there a motion?
Oh, moved.
Second.
Motion to adopt the resolu, or, yeah, the resolution by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Merkel, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Let the record show that that was unanimous. And we'll move on to the city manager's report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. A few items for you this evening. First, city offices will be closed on Friday, November 10th, in observance of Veterans Day. And believe it or not, we're also talking about Thanksgiving. And city offices will be closed on Thursday, November 23rd, and Friday, November 24th, in observance of Thanksgiving. Breakfast with Santa is Saturday, December 16th, yeah, at 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. Tickets go on sale here in the month of November, I'm sorry, November 20th, Monday, November 20th, and they go fast. So there are only 200 tickets to go around, so if you want them, be sure to get here early on the 20th. The Meadowbrook Pool House mural, if you'll recall at the last council meeting, or two council meetings ago, staff presented council with some ideas. With the discussion that happened with council and then discussion with the art club at Northmont, they asked that we postpone that project, give them an opportunity to revise some of the plans that they presented, and then also have another group of students have an opportunity to design something for that space. Staff agrees with them. I'm assuming council is fine with that if we just hold on that project. A little good news, the Laura's Loft buildings should be demolished by the beginning of 2024, so that's nice. And then, speaking of Officer Cecil, there is a benefit for Officer Cecil at the Irish Club on Friday, November 17th, from 5:00 to 10:00 p.m. at the Irish Club of Dayton, which is at 6555 Dogleg Road. DJ Darren will be there from 5:00 to 7:00, live music by Rick Sylvester from 7:00 to 10:00, raffle items, 50/50 drawings. The entry fee is $10 for adults, $5 for children, and those under 5 are free. And the entry fee includes food. If you want more information, you can call Ashley Cecil at 937-838-1733. And that's all I have for you this evening.
Any questions or comments for the city manager?
Is there still a GoFundMe page for him?
I think there is. It's not, it's not through the city, I'm not sure who set that up. The Police Association? Okay, Officer Godwin did it, so yes, there is.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, thank you. We're gonna move to visitors' comments. We have a couple of visitors in the gallery today. Anything from you folks? Nope? Sam, no? Anything else? Earl? Got anything?
First thing I want to say is, wow. Pumpkin patch was great. Jack ordered 200 pumpkins and we only, we need, didn't need any. We was, we had four, three or four left over. When you can come that close with that many people. And the kids and the fathers and the mothers there were carving and just enjoyed it. I had all kinds of great comments. I want to say thank you to Amanda with her boys come out, they got all the pumpkins out, so that meant I didn't have to do it, or Jack didn't have to do it. So they helped us all the way through, everything was great.
Excuse me, I think it would be nice, where did the pumpkins come from?
Wetzel Farms.
They were donated?
Yeah, they were donated.
And weren't there some other things there too, Jack, that were donated?
Myers with the candies and supplies, the cutting supplies. But it turned out great and everybody participated. And Jack, oh, well, he managed it, it was perfect, just a great night. It's always so beneficial to show what Clayton is and, and you, you as members of the council, how good it all turned out. And it's just another great thing for Clayton. So that's really all I have to say. Thank you.
I agree with everything you said, it was a really nice event. Thanks all for the work and tell your sons thanks for doing all the muscle work. No other visitor comments? We'll move forward then. We'll start with the council, we'll start with Mr. Bachman.
Evening, everyone. Glad to hear of, you know, the recent events, success. Wasn't able to make it, was out of town this past weekend. And I know there was also the new playground at Northview Park that the ceremony for, saw the pictures of that, that was very nice. You know, and full disclosure, obviously, that was a company I worked for, Play Care was the installation for that. I deal with the different side of the business more in the indoor playgrounds. But when that build was going on, obviously, a project manager for that, I was really on him, just like, hey, that better be, that better be a pretty good one. You know, but, yeah, I know our staff, you know, our, our crew really liked working on that and to hear, you know, that asset to the community of, of an ADA playground. Only, I guess I advertised only one in Northwest Montgomery County. So that's, you know, good to be the, the pioneers of that, I'm sure more will be coming, so. But, yeah, I know there was a lot of work to, to get that, you know, with multiple entities, so, you know, great work by a lot of people. And, you know, and a lot's gonna be said about, you know, Officer Cecil and the police, and what it really comes down to is, you know, you can put a price tag on, you know, the equipment, the body armor and things like that, that, that the police need, but you can't put a price on the men and women who put that gear on every day and do, even in the safest, even in one of the safest cities in the state, you know, it's still a dangerous job, so can't be more appreciative to, to the police of fire. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gorman?
Yeah, I'd like to also thank everyone who worked on carvings, costumes and carvings last Saturday and as well as, or Sunday, and the park initiation on Saturday. I'd also like to thank once again the Charter Review Commission that seemed to put in a lot of hours reviewing the charter and thank them for their work. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Merkel?
As already been mentioned, you know, the acknowledgement of Officer Cecil in terms of the, the events of this, this past week. Ironically enough, I'm a block away from where all that action happened. So at 1:45 in the afternoon, I hear sirens running from all different directions, and you don't know what's going on, and it's like you're not gonna go out and try to figure out what's happening, because obviously, it's not something you want to be part of despite the actions going on. And then the email, text message that comes out. It's an unfortunate course of events, and, you know, Officer, you know, Cecil, I guess from the standpoint of, you know, you don't know what officer goes through until something like this happens. And it's hard to sympathize or understand the stresses that officer has to go through on a data, databases, and then when something like this happens. But also, we should not forget the family that was also affected, the loss of a person through mental health. And so, you know, my sympathies also go out to the family. As far as that event, it's an unfortunate turn, but the important thing is in the case of things that, you know, the officer recovers and the other officers that were there also are able to recover from the event as it, as it took place, and we offer them martial support. On a better, brighter sense, of all the other things that happened in the past month, you know, the tragedies around the world and this sort, you know, my dad celebrated his 95th birthday in the middle of October, and my dad is now 95 years of age, not exactly the best of health, but, you know, he's my dad, and I am definitely glad that I still have him around, and I'm glad I'm able to take care of him. And persons who don't know my dad, you know, my dad ran a drugstore at the corner of Main and Westbrook Road for essentially 35 years. Opened his business in October of 1959, and he was one of the most trusting persons that persons in the community ever came across, because everybody respected his, his commentary and his help, and he was the type of person that talk about when you needed something at an odd hour of the day or night. You know, my, my kid is sick, I just, I need something at 2:00 in the morning, you know, he would get out of bed, go down and help them out. Or if somebody said, hey, I need medication, I don't have any money, he would say, hey, don't worry about it, we'll, we'll just, we'll take care of it at the end of the month. So, you know, the old-style type person that, that you had in your community that essentially was the trusted businessperson who had the trust of the community. And like I said, I'm glad I still have him after all these years, and I, I'm glad each, each morning when I get up, that he's still with me. So I just, you know, wanted to acknowledge the fact that I have my dad to take care of, so. One of those things you never, don't take for granted, so.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Kelly?
I agree with everyone's comments, and one thing that wasn't said, that next Tuesday's Election Day, if you haven't voted already, get out and exercise your right to vote. And I wanted to mention happy birthday to Dennis Lieberman, today's his birthday.
He wasn't gonna mention that, or what?
No.
Thank you, Tina. Dennis?
Well, you know, turnaround was fair play, because my understanding is Tina has a birthday tomorrow. I think it's about the big 3-0.
Yeah.
But in all due sincerity, it seems like, you all were right, so much has gone in the past couple months and, and happened in our community. And Officer Cecil has been on my mind quite a bit, and I want him to know that, I want you all to know that. I couldn't be prouder of our police department, I mean, and our fire department. Wherever I go and I see a lot of police on a daily basis, sometimes my experiences with them aren't so good, but, but I, I compare them to our police, and, and I think we have the best around. And I just want you all to know that, we got your backs. Thank you.
Okay.
I, I happen to be personal friends with the people that live next door to the house on Hacker where this incident took place, and they wanted me to thank the police department. where this incident took place. And they wanted me to thank the police department. They went in and took their daughter out of the house and kept her safely during the whole incident. And Doug and Renee are very thankful, Matt. So.
Okay, I really don't have anything else to add that I haven't already said. I think the events over this, you know, past week, you know, the playground, it is excellent, by the way. Tell your, your crew that they really did a great job. Everyone's really impressed with it. Park looks fantastic. And of course, you know, the incident with Officer Cecil, again, it's, I just can't say enough. I'm really super proud of him and of our folks. So I hope they know that. I think they do. So with that, I'm gonna conclude.
Sorry, we do have a need for a brief executive session.
Okay, and will you tell us why we're having that?
Pursuant to ORC 121.22 GA with respect to economic development. So if we could just have a motion and a vote on that, please.
Okay, is there a motion that we go into?
I move we adjourn for a brief.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gorman, second by Ms. Kelly. Can we have a roll call, please?
Bachman?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Merkel?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Lieberman?
Yes.
And Stevens?
Yes. We are going to executive, respectfully request all of our visitors to leave. You're welcome to come back if you want for the adjournment, but I doubt if you do. But anyway, I want to thank everyone for coming in. And happy birthday, Tina and Dennis.
Okay, we're back in regular session. Is there a motion to adjourn?